Ms. Hurst?
Present.
Attorney Murphy?
Present.
Ms. Naylor?
Present.
Ms. Gresham?
Present.
Ms. Perez?
Maria, Maria, you're muted.
Probably I should say like the present.
Mr. Collins?
Present.
Mayor Sarno?
Present.
Will we all please run over to silence and report your reasons?
I'm unmuted. Agents to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I hope all you and your families are doing well and have water and I know we're getting the power back on it ever so as ASAP. I want to thank again Commissioner Helen Colton Harris for being here for us and also Director of Facilities Management at Parks, Patrick Sullivan and Bob Kirchner who's here. And of course you have Attorney Bill Mahoney. You do have one man that will take up very quickly after the first major vote that we have to take. So with that, I'm going to voting items. Actually, the presentation, the discussion of the school reopening plan and what I'm going to do is introduce Director Patrick Sullivan and make a brief introduction of Bob Kirchner. He's an industrial hygienist on our continued review of reopening plan. Director Sullivan. But even school committee members, over the past week and a half, we've been working along with the superintendent and other people from your team in the assessment of the 57 school buildings in relationship to the DESI plan that was presented to the school district on July 27. And after reviewing their information along with our information of 57 school buildings and in consultation with our health department, it became very clear we needed outside assistance and determining and given the school board information to make this important decision on the return to school of 26,000 students and over 3,000 staff members. So in consultation with the mayor and the school superintendent and our Commissioner of Health and Human Services, Helen Colton, it was decided very quickly that Bob Kirchner from O'Reilly, Calvin, Oakland had the skill set and the background as an industrial hygienist to assist us with that. And what he is going to do this evening is give you the information that we have provided to him of our initial review and how it relates to the DESI study. So with that, it's my pleasure to introduce you to Bob Kirchner.
Thank you. Thank you, Patrick. To reinforce what Patrick said, OTO, O'Reilly, Calvin, Oakland, myself as an industrial hygienist have been retained by the city of Springfield to do or form an initial assessment in accordance with the DESI guidelines that they submitted on July 27. In summary, what those guidelines entail is increased ventilation generally across the board for all schools as well as increased filtration. So it's a ventilation and filtration increase that they are looking for. We performed this assessment. It's an initial assessment that we've done to date. In our opinion, there's a lot more that needs to be done. Based on our initial assessment, we've identified 57 school buildings all have different HVAC, heating, refrigeration, air conditioning type systems for their buildings. Each one is different. Each school building is different, obviously with different ages. And there's different complications for each one if we were to just give you a blank assessment. Our assessment included reviewing plans and documents with the HVAC facility staff. We are, OTO and myself, are familiar with the school buildings. We've done a number of projects within school buildings with regards to our industrial hygiene assessment. It's important to recognize and we say it and I can't overemphasize it, that this assessment was in response to COVID-19 and the DESI standards that they put out. It's not a comprehensive or indoor air quality assessment per se, but to evaluate for specific COVID ventilation filtration and to ensure that the HVAC systems operate so that we have a safe classroom environment. To date, we've looked at those 57 school buildings on paper. Obviously, there's some school buildings that are old. Some school buildings are brand new, the brand new ones and the new systems that we've worked with recently. We know that they achieve both the DESI standard as well as the ASHRAE standard. The ASHRAE standard, the ASHRAE is the American Society of Heating, Refrigeration and Air Conditioning Engineers. They are a consensus body that provides data and develops guidelines and standards. They're consensus standards that are then adopted by the International Building Code and the international existing building code. So we follow and we look a little more stringent than what DESI would do and what DESI has asked for. The filtration ventilation rates, in our opinion, should be followed using the more conservative method, using the ASHRAE guidelines. And that's what we're proposing to do for the 57 buildings. To date, we have not performed site inspections. We do need to do that, in our opinion, based on the documents and the information that we receive. Our assessment to date is very limited and we need to do really a comprehensive assessment of each school building as well as their HVAC system and ventilation system to ensure we can meet these standards in open school accordingly. So our plans and what our proposal is, is to basically assess each of the 57 school buildings, provide a comprehensive assessment and submit a report identifying, you know, where the current status is for the HVAC system in relation to COVID and more importantly, to the ASHRAE standards and the DESI standards with ventilation increasing and increasing of filtration rates. So as a result of that, we really have not got, you know, a final conclusion, although we do know, based on what we see, is that much, much more work in performing this assessment is needed before we can give you a comprehensive answer as to, you know, does all 57 school buildings meet this DESI and ASHRAE standard? In summary, our recommendation at this point, and again, it's important to reemphasize that we were just, or DESI just released these, their guidelines and standards on July 27. So in the short period of time that we have, we review documents, paperwork at meetings, but based on that, our recommendation would be to consider a more comprehensive evaluation to be performed prior to opening schools due to the current pandemic state and the unknown conditions. I think it would be advisable to consider not opening schools until at least the review that's been completed and the school committee has a comprehensive report so that they can make an informed decision as to the status of opening schools.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
I had come into this meeting fully prepared to send the message back to DESI that we won't make a decision soon, that we needed more time, we did not have enough information to make an educated decision. But when, and I stated that clearly to everybody, and that's when I thought we needed a short window of time to do some parental reports to find out, to do the calling to parents and get some information that might be gathered in a very quick fashion. Talking to other people in other places that had to undergo some of these reviews and then make some changes to their buildings, this is much longer than a short period of time. So I'm going to make a motion at this point, and then we can discuss the motion, that we vote to open schools in a qualified hybrid manner. Before everybody falls off their chair, let me explain what qualified means. Qualified means that we would stay fully and completely remote until we've got the kind of health information that we could get from an in-depth review of all of our buildings for ventilation and changing of air, until we get some more information about the state of the virus and some more information on how we can cooperate with each other to put in practices and policies to let us be able to evaluate remote education in a proper way. Guessing that that is going to take, I think conservatively, eight weeks, but it could go as long as 12 weeks, that opening anyway but remote at this point in time would not be a proper thing for us to do. It gives us more time. It gives us some time to put those policies and procedures in place that lots of teachers, by the way, have contacted us and told us that they've been working on different things and different plans during summer school, which they have found as new ways, better ways to use remote education and there's been a lot of improvement. And we need time to share those practices, which we do have these 15 days now. So I'm optimistic that we're really concentrating effort on 15 days, that they can get remote to a way where it's going to be miles ahead of where it was in September, I mean, in March. So I don't have the hesitancy that I might have once had about staying remote. I think remote has been flushed out very, very well by the staff and the teachers have all given us information and good information that there is a lot of way to make that progress. So I'm comfortable making that. And just a side note, and then someone can second the motion, all of us on the school committee received lots and lots and lots of communication emails and the like from teachers after the meeting the other night. We still haven't had a chance to talk to many of our other constituencies, which we can do if we're gone fully, if we stay fully remote before we consider switching over to, you know, to a hybrid model. But in those comments, I, some of them were phenomenal, well thought out, great suggestions, really good communication. Clearly, it was an organized communication, right? Because some of them had almost cut and paste languages. But there was a significant number that disturbed me that instead of just making a cogent argument and giving their opinion, they did what is happening in our society today. They vilified the members of this committee, which offended the living daylights out of me. And they, they said some things that were, you know, they said, "We don't care about children." Many things that were extremely offensive. For those people, and they identified themselves as teachers, I would say you search your soul. That's not what we want you passing on to our children and that's not a way to make a cogent argument and to get people to listen to your perspective when you attack and vilify people. That doesn't change what I said about I think we need to stay remote. I just would encourage people, it's a societal issue today that we're all complaining about. Let's not be part of the problem. Let's not vilify people who don't agree with us.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second, please?
May I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Is there any way that before we entertain the motion that we can ask questions of the industrial hygienist?
Industrial hygienist?
Sure. On the motion, it's about, go ahead.
So I guess my question is, of the, of the 57 schools that we have, one, how many are or would have been potentially prepared to receive students and teachers? Two, how do we have an ETA on how long might it take to prepare buildings to be ready or to meet these particular standards? And considering the age of some of our buildings, will some of them ever be able to meet those standards?
Mr. Kirchner or Director Sullivan, please?
Well, I forgot your first question.
Yeah, I can, so, sir, that's why we need the additional time. Those are the same questions we are asking and that's why we need to have the industrial hygienist along to prepare that plan. It needs to be vetted through our health department and then presented to the school committee. So we don't have no specific answers for you this evening and that's why we need to study this issue more in depth.
So when did we know? Because I, I think that after I've had some time to just sort of think about it, did we, when did we find this, when did we find this out? Because I, I don't know that I was the one that asked the question, but at some point, somebody asked, you know, are our buildings in the condition that they need to be? And I feel like we were told yes.
Well, I received the information from DESI on July 27. Within three to four days, I was in contact. We worked through that weekend and with the mayor and the school superintendent. And that's what I said, we need, I need assistance to make, and we need more in-depth information than what DESI has provided. And then I got the clearance to hire Bob Kirchner from O'Reilly, Calvin, Oakland, who's on one of our occult service contracts. And it was within three days of meeting with Bob that we came to the conclusion and it was probably, maybe then, when did we, Monday?
Monday.
Monday, it was Tuesday, we had that meeting with Bob and it was at that time. So just this week. That's when Bob said, you know, we, we have to do more detailed points. We need to do more. So it was this, this week that we learned that we need more. Because we have on our spreadsheet for all 57 buildings, we can put the MERV 13 bill thing in. We, you know, per the DESI guidelines, we could meet those DESI guidelines. But as Bob Kirchner said, we want to meet the ASHRAE standards of buildings and that's going to be a better system to follow to ensure safety under COVID. So all of our buildings have safety air today, but we have to look at the standards that we want to meet and the management of the COVID under this pandemic. And so it was basically Tuesday, Wednesday of this week when I told the mayor and the school superintendent that, listen, I'm going to need another six to eight weeks of work for the industrial hygienist. He doesn't feel comfortable till he has to go out. He wants to view these systems due to just different renovations that have taken place over the years and so forth. So he wants to physically view these school facilities. So it was this week that we learned that we, we knew two weeks, well, we knew two days after the DESI guidance, we could meet her guidance. But that's when I wasn't fully comfortable and that's when we brought the industrial hygienist down. And by the way, Mr. Kirchner was the one working with Pat and Director Sullivan, Helen Colton Harris and the rest of my team on with COVID-19 and how we dealt with our vulnerable homeless population. As you can see that we paid dividends. So that's why I said the availability of Bob and having Mr. Kirchner work into it. And again, before we go to the second, all of us on the school committee members, but worked very, very hard and we told all our constituents all across the board, we're going to base this decision not only a structural, educational aspect, but we're going to base it on public health, medical and the sciences. And that's exactly what we're, we're doing. We don't want to put anyone, students, families, teacher administrations in harm's way, but we want to continue to move forward. Denise, if I recall the questions we were asking earlier on, they were all around air quality.
I have a question.
Our air quality in the buildings is up to where we need it to be. The DESI guidelines, when they came in, started talking about ventilation. How often do you change the air in COVID? So that's one point I wanted to make. And I, like you, were wondering, some of our buildings, will we ever get to where we need be? So in part of the definition of qualified hybrid, some buildings might not be able to open and we may have to address that down the road. But if we're going to, if, if we've got eight to 12 weeks to address that, how do we handle if some buildings can't open? Because we all know the age of our building stock. I wouldn't be surprised if at the end of all of this, we get told some of the buildings you're not going to get to where you want to get pertaining to the COVID-19. Mr. Kirchner, you want to clarify? Before I go back to Ms. Hurst, my discretion, I have a question.
Yes. You know, when we got the DESI and we reviewed the DESI guidelines and what they were requesting, it, it sounds simple on paper. Increased ventilation, increased outdoor ventilation specifically. And they say, open your HVAC louvers so you allow more air. It sounds like a very simple thing to do. And at the same time, they say increased filtration. So they want us to go with a more comprehensive, a thicker, a more dense, what we classify as a MERV. MERV is a rating of air filters and HVAC unit. They want to go with a MERV 13 filter for ultrafiltration. Both of those things are great, but what they do is they require engineering to ensure that I don't create additional problems with the building and/or with the HVAC system. You would think that just putting in a better filter is easy and simple and doesn't cause other problems. But what it does do is it puts more stress on the fan, on the motors, on all of the other equipment because it has to push that air through a more dense filter. So for every action, there's a reaction. There's significant reactions that we're going to have to look at from an engineering perspective to see exactly if our systems can handle those additional volumes of air at that level of filtration. That we don't know right now. We need that comprehensive assessment to do that.
On the motion to qualify hybrid, we starting remote. I don't know if Ms. Hurst has any more questions or discretion had a question, I know that. Denise, are you all set, Ms. Hurst?
I, I, I am. And then I'll go after Barbara if possible.
Discretion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Chris, when you say qualified hybrid, what, what do you, what does that mean? Because I think that language will probably confuse some people when you put hybrid in there.
I, I agree, Barbara. And I thought hard about that. Qualified meaning that we're going to stay remote until eight to 12 weeks. Qualified meaning that when we get to that point, maybe not all of our buildings might be open. So it's qualified that some children might have to stay remote or even if we go, it might be mandatory. The only reason that I put qualified hybrid is we all know, we are getting, we've got the Federal government threatening to withhold funds. We now have our own, DESI, telling us that they may withhold funds or in or put us under heavier scrutiny if we don't do hybrid. Well, by making a qualified hybrid, we're, they can't say that we're not doing hybrid. Now, the qualification is the goal. We're going to stay remote until we can go to hybrid safety.
Well, I think we should just say remote, fully remote. Leave it at that because I'm telling you, it's going to confuse people adding hybrid to that.
I, and I thought while I thought that and I, and I put, I was going to word it that way and I keep getting told by people who have to deal with the state, we need the word hybrid in there. Because I, I, like you, would just, I want my motion to go the other way.
So can't you get the consensus of all of us?
Sure. When we discuss the motion, we certainly, that's part of discussing the motion.
Yes. But I think we need to be, personally, I don't want hybrid attached to it either. Qualified, remote. Why not?
Can we have a second so we can, you can amend the motion any way you want or people can. But in order to continue the discussion, we actually should have a second before we continue discussion on changing the motion or whatever you want to do in the motion. Is there?
Well, Chris, you just went in with it. You, I mean, I don't understand that.
Well, I think, discretion, just, I think the school committee has voiced our goal, as long as it's public health, medical, science, passing the test that it's safe. Our goal is that, when that is, is to get our kids back into our system as soon as possible and also monitoring how this process is going right now. Right now, as we do what I do diligence, is about saying, Mr. Collins' initial motion of qualified hybrid, to stay remote, to stay remote because we want to do, continue the view. So when we do, when and if it is considered a hybrid, we have all the facts. But right now, we would stay remote, we stay remote. Discretion?
Yes. Okay, go ahead Denise and then I'll, I'm not done yet. You can go ahead.
So I just saw Melinda Phelps or Attorney Phelps unmute herself, so. Right. I just was responding to the question of there has been no second to the motion. And as I understood it on the agenda, it's a presentation and the discussion of the school reopening plan, which included appropriately Councilwoman or School Committee Woman, Hurst, asking the hygienist questions with regards to his report. So I, if, if there are more questions with regards to that report, that can be done outside of the framework of a second. But if, but once you start moving into talking about hybrid, qualified hybrid, et cetera, which is the basis of the motion, that really should be done after there's a second, if there is a second.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? I mean, I'm happy to second the motion.
All right, seconded by Attorney Murphy. Roll call, we didn't discuss on the motion. So there is a second motion by Vice Chair Collins, seconded by Attorney Peter Murphy. So discussion can continue.
Right. Thank you.
Attorney Murphy?
No, thank you, Mayor. I mean, I'm happy to second the motion. I, I don't think it's an ideal situation for, obviously, our children, for our teachers and our parents, but it's, it's the best we can do under the circumstances. And I do think that Ms. Gresham and Mr. Collins are correct in the sense that it would be nice to have a consensus, even though perhaps we're all not happy about the situation. And as a parent, it is very difficult. Remote learning is going to be difficult for many of our single parents and many of our working parents and guardians and grandparents. But I think under the circumstances, it's the best possible option and I'm, I'm happy to second the motion.
Thank you, Attorney Murphy. Any school committee members on the motion? Ms. Perez? You're muted. Ms. Perez?
Maria? I'm trying to understand the dynamic. I think from the beginning, I was one of the ones that presented the issue and concern of the proper ventilations in the school, being Gerina School. And that's one that comes in mine in my district that we know for fact that we've been having so many issues when it comes to the air quality of Gerina School. I have to be transparent and then, and how long has it taken us? And right now, thinking about Gerina, the one that I know the best when it comes to air quality, there's some equipment and I'm not a professional in it. there's some equipment, and I'm not a professional in it, that would need to be addressed before we could think about addressing coming back hybrid. And it has been for so many years that right now I got so many questions. The other question that I have is that we don't have at least a summary in front of us to see each of the 57 schools that we are identifying, what are their issues? And if in fact, we are able to work with those issues and put the, and meet the standards that those schools needs to meet. I mean, that's from our report, and I'm asking this question because I don't have in front of me that.
That's what we, that's what's going to be done, Ms. Perez.
And I understand that, but then we having this qualified hybrid with, I'm not, with no report in front of us to in fact say that we're going to have 12 weeks that we're going to be addressing these issues. And we need to, we need to have all the plan in place, personally myself, because I got concerned. Like I said the last time, we have the education in one hand, and we have the health. And if we don't have the health and the level that we should have it, we're not going to have the education. So right now, I am very puzzled about the qualifying hybrid. We're not having in front of me all the information that requires. That's my statement that I'm making, I'm not even asking a question.
Oh, I think the word qualified that Vice Chair Collins has put forth is exactly that. It would, you stay remote, and you'd have, it'd have to be qualified that you pass all the standards, safe standards of public health, medical, and sciences, plus seeing where the virus goes or does not go before we would even consider these students and children going back. So the initial thing here is remote, remote, remote. But I think we've all stated publicly that the goal is if we are able to get our children back in and teacher safe, when all the facts or information are there, that would be our goal. When and if, when and if.
Excuse me, may I ask a question? So I guess the the concern that I'm hearing and that I'm feeling also is what is wrong with us saying that we want to be remote and revisit this conversation in 12 weeks after we received a report that tells us what is, what the situation is with each of our schools? And I would dare say live, and I hope there's enough people listening, that if DESI is threatening to cut our funding off the state, to cut our funding because we want to make our families are safe and our educators are safe in the buildings, then shame on them. I don't think that's acceptable, and I would stand in Boston, state help, pleading for equity and for civility, because that is totally unacceptable for them to even make a statement or suggestion that if we don't put hybrid, that they're going to not fund us. And so I dare stand up and say like, no, that's not acceptable. It's not acceptable at all. And 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 it makes me very angry as a mother who has to send my kids into a school, and my, two of my kids are going to Putnam. So when you say remote, my kids are missing out on a huge piece of their education by not being able to be in the school every day. But I value the fact that I want my kids to be alive, and I want the educators to be alive so that they can continue to educate my kids when we make it through this crisis. So I think for us to even dare say anything beyond remote at this standpoint is to say that we are willing to jeopardize the lives of our kids and our and our families. I am not willing to do that. And and I, and I, yeah, I just, I just have to say, I think at this standpoint, other districts are waiting for us to make our decision. And if we say hybrid, they're going to say hybrid because they're waiting on us to make a decision. And that is not something that I want to be sleeping in the middle of the night and finding out that somebody has passed or is dealing with the situation of COVID. I don't know if any of you have had the displeasure of knowing someone who has had to fight it or died from it, but it is not something that we want to play around with. And most of the time, these kids don't show symptoms, and they're bringing it into their homes. And it's not something that we can prepare for. It's not something that putting thermos, the thermometers up or asking people to self-certify and all this without testing and all these other things is not going to happen in 12 weeks. To be honest, is not just, not just is it not enough time for us to wait for a report on ventilation? It's not enough time for us to come up with the policies and procedures that are going to guarantee that we know that things are going to be safe when people do go back to the building. So I said my piece.
So Mr. Mayor, if I'm.
Ms. Hurst, go ahead.
Yep, so if I may, you know, to confuse parents, teachers, and the community would be a huge disservice. And right now, or at least for the last several weeks that we've been talking about this, and I appreciate the thought that you've put into this, Chris, but no one has said anything about a qualified hybrid. And if we now make up our own words, I think that that would further confuse people. I think it would up the ante and up the anxiety that people are already feeling. And we're going to at some point have to revisit this conversation that I don't know, if if we have to revisit it in eight to 12 weeks, then let's revisit it in eight to 12 weeks. But let's call it what it is, is remote. And to Latonya's point and to many of the others, Maria and Barbara, if the, if DESI and/or the federal government decides that they're not going to fund us or give us what is due to us, then they're going to do that to all of the other districts that have decided to go remote, right? It's not going to just be Springfield that gets left off in this island. And together, we will be very strong advocates against being left out. And so I, I don't want to, we have a community. I mean, we just saw, we had to provide five different translation services. It is already very difficult for people to have to try and comprehend what is happening. And we are going to do a further disservice if we complicate the matter any more than we need to.
Vice Chair Collins? When you, I, I should have learned, my gut was to come with one after, was to put a motion after hearing Mr. Kersner not say qualified hybrid, to go with qualified remote, meaning we're going to revisit in six to eight weeks. I should have followed my gut. I, and I apologize, because we usually, we should speak straightforward. Trying to, trying to avoid a public fight, a future fight is not usually the way I operate either. It breaks the hair on the back of my neck to even put that out there, because you know me, I'd rather stand up in the street and say, come at me. You know, we're going to do what we believe is right, and the problem began. Go ahead, come after us. So would it be more acceptable if I changed the motion to qualified remote? With the definition of qualified meaning, we're going to revisit this in 10 to 12 weeks? And we could go remote, I mean, we could go hybrid.
Yeah, I think, I think, oh, I'm sorry, can I?
Ms. Gresham, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, I think having saying qualified hybrid is going to confuse people. And I don't think it's fair to put hybrid in that statement at all. Either you can say qualified remote and leave it at that.
I will.
And then we revisit, and that'll give us time to get more information, have more parents and the community involved in what we are doing and to know what we are doing.
I'll be glad to change the motion, the word remote in the motion to, I mean, the word hybrid to remote, as long as the secondor agrees to it. Take out the word hybrid and put in the word remote.
So there's been a motion and a second. And so you'd have to call for the question on that motion and then reintroduce another motion or withdraw the motion and have a second.
I wonder if that was a friendly amendment, maybe. Herself's is a friendly amendment. Changing one word in an amendment can be a friendly amendment, correct?
Yeah, as long as there's a second to it.
So this would be in a friendly amendment, is there a technical? Does the original secondor agree? I think that's the way we're supposed to follow. So that would be Peter, Attorney Murphy?
Sorry.
So Chris, I have a question. Can you just read, withdraw that motion?
We could, that's fine, if you find that more comforting, I'll withdraw it.
But there needs, there needs to be a second, there needs to be a motion to withdraw it and a second on that motion.
All right, there's a motion to withdraw on Vice Chair Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hurst, roll call vote is, for all these matters now, roll call vote is required. Adam Burke, please follow along.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Maria? It was a, you said yes, Maria, is there a thumb up, is it, yes, okay.
Maria, yes, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yeah, court of sufficient vote is so, it's passed, and again, so I would say, I will change the motion to, we vote a qualified remote with the definition of qualified, so that everybody is clear. We will revisit this in 10 to 12 weeks with a, you know, to analyze going to hybrid. Is there a second?
Say that again, Chris, I'm sorry.
I'm changing it to qualified remote with the definition of qualified being that we are going to revisit in 10 to 12 weeks to see if we can change to hybrid.
I'd second that.
Wait, no, no.
Murphy?
No, we can't.
All right, discussion on the motion, and again, before I open discussion on the motion, I think what Vice Chair Collins had originally put forward or the friendly, this amendment here was on two things, I think we all said, based, again, I'll say it again, the public health, medical, science, when and if it is safe, the transition, when and if, and also following where the virus goes. Latonya and Ms. Hurst, Ms. Taylor, I agree with you. If the feds or DESI is going to try to take money away from us, believe you me, by our legal, we will fight that tooth and nail. So we're just trying to do a balancing act here. The major thing, so there's that confusion, is that we are going to go back remote.
Period. We don't need any hybrid stuck into that at all.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was taken out.
But Chris just mentioned hybrid.
I did, hybrid, remote. Because I did, because at, the rest of the committee were saying that we will evaluate in 10 to 12 weeks to see if it is safe to go remote. I, not putting the word qualified in meaning in the motion, I don't want to give all the parents, when they hear that we went to go remote, period. There's going to be a belief out there that we're staying that way all year, and that, that it's, there's no chance.
No. No, you're, you're leaving it remote for the next six to 12 weeks, right?
I said.
And then we revisit.
That's what I said.
And then.
Qualified meant that it's in eight to 12 weeks, we are going to revisit to see whether we be able to switch to a hybrid model.
No, that's not what we talked about, Chris, no.
May I ask a question?
Ms. Hurst?
I guess my question is, in the three options that DESI, that DESI gave us to choose from, in the option of remote, did it stipulate a timeframe?
No.
No.
Okay, so it didn't stipulate a timeframe. The, we are working under the impression that if we choose remote, that at some point, when it is safe enough, that we will return back to the school buildings, right? I mean, because there wasn't even a timeframe stipulated to a hybrid, was there?
There was not. It's a typical DESI, they left it open, and some people will interpret it the way you are, Mrs. Hurst. Some people are going to interpret it, you voted to go remote, that's for the whole year. People interpret two different ways.
But so instead of, instead of potentially further confusing.
Confusing people.
Why can't we just say remote and and provide the caveat or the clarification that, you know, this will be reassessed or reevaluated, you know, at a, at the appropriate juncture, at the appropriate time? I guess I'm just struggling to understand why we have to use the word qualified and further confuse people. This is just such a difficult time for people. I just don't know why we would do that.
Do you, do you want the message out there, what you just said, that we are going to reevaluate, reevaluate at set point in time? If we do, then perhaps we should make the motion to go remote for 12 weeks, or up to 12 weeks, 12.
May I ask, may I?
So.
Ms. Hurst, Ms. Taylor?
So I'm not opposed to that. I'm not opposed to saying that in 12 weeks, we'll review that. I do think we need to clarify when that 12 weeks starts. Does it start on September 14th? Does it start when we take the vote today? Just so that if we're going to make sure that we're clear in our communications, like, let's make sure that we're clear from, from the gate. So that 12 weeks starts tonight? Or does that 12 weeks start from, from September 14th, which is when we have, which is the date that we voted on with respect to the calendar?
I would have interpreted 12 weeks of school, but if we need to clarify, then we would say the date, I agree. We need, we probably should be specific to say starting first day of school, September, I agree. That's, that's a very good point.
So I, I'm, if we're going to just say we are going total remote or remote from September 14th, or for 12 weeks, starting from September 14th, and that we're going to evaluate it, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. And then I think that as a committee, we then have to then, in conjunction with the superintendent, have some real concrete deadlines or benchmarks around how we're going to be gauging our potential return and what that looks like.
So first day of school is.
Of that 12 weeks.
First day of school is the 15th, so we're going to put that into, 12 weeks after the 15th. I mean, we're not, we're not going to, I don't want to understand it, but we're not going to make any moves that would jeopardize our student, administration, teachers and staff. We're going to, we're going to continue in our study and analyzing the situation and also working very closely with public health officials to see where this virus goes or doesn't go. But I think we've all said publicly, our goal, once it is publicly health, safe and sound medical sciences, to get our kids back in school, when and if, when and if. So right now, to all of you in the audience, we're, we're going remote, and we're going to continue to do our due diligence with specialists. And if a positive trend occurs, as Ms. Hurst said, structured education. If not, we continue to stay remote. So I don't know what word we want to use or not, or friendly amendment on it. I think we're all agreed that we are starting off remote, and due diligence being done. But whether, I want to, Ms. Taylor, Ms. Hurst, and Vice Chair Collins. There's one word Barbara has, that one sticking point with that one word. I think we're all on the same page, just clarifying on one word. And the date now we agree would be first day of school, September 15th. So that's where we're at right now, Ms. Taylor?
My question.
Mr. Mayor.
My question.
That's Maria, I still know Ms. Taylor.
Okay.
My question was, how long is the first term or the first quarter of the school year?
Usually ends in early November.
And I asked that question because would it, the 12 weeks fall around that timeframe? Would it make sense to just say the first quarter? Remote, and that way we're not confusing people with grading and all of that stuff. And then for this, and then if we are able to move to a hybrid when we, when we evaluate. And the concern that I have with the language of qualified and saying we revisit to possibly be remote, I mean, hybrid, is that we may revisit and not be able to go hybrid at all, right? Because then the numbers could be picking up again, and floozies and hits and all of that. So I think, I think for us to say the first term would be remote, and then we'd be able to assess at that time what the situation is and then make a decision on how we proceed, would just make it more easy for people to do what they need to do for planning and purposes. It, it just seems to me that when we stop our kids in the middle of the, the way, that it confuses them more and it causes more issues than it does actually help.
Before I go to Ms. Perez, Attorney Phillips, you had your hand up, did you want to clarify something later?
Just a point of information.
Just a point of information to Ms. Naylor's inquiry, 12 weeks from September 15th brings it to December 8th.
Okay, so it goes into the second quarter, which is something to make note of, I think we have to think about. Because now we're in the middle of another quarter getting ready for Christmas break and then, so there's a lot of things happening. So I think, I just want to be clear that when we're saying a timeframe, that we're looking at what that timeframe is going to mean for planning and for our kids and making sure that we're not going to do more, more damage or disservice to folks.
Ms. Perez?
Yes, um, this is very difficult. I'm hearing the 12 weeks, but I'm not hearing, how soon are we going to get a summary of the report of the 57 schools? Because I don't want to lock in, in the 12 week, we're not having a report, a complete report or a summary, so it could guide us into those 12 weeks. Because what happens if we, we're not discussing three or four schools, we are saying 57 schools. So I gather that we need to have a timeframe of the report in order to us assess what directions we are going to take instead of locking into 12 weeks. And when we file a report with a 12 week, we are, if we are locked in, and that's a question, in those 12 weeks. I am more concerned about seeing the report of the schools, having a plan in place, and seeing where are we moving, so then we could come out to the table and decide if we're going to go hybrid or not. That's my concern that I'm presenting right now.
I would like to add to that. Our goal is to have that report turned around within six weeks, and that would be six weeks, I would say, from tonight. And if we can get it done earlier, we will be informing the school superintendent, the mayor, it's done earlier than that. So getting, once again, we have to clarify. Just, no, just for clarity and to follow the same procedure that we just did, I am willing to withdraw that motion. And Mrs. Naylor may, or whomever, if they, if you want to make a motion to go remote for the first quarter, the first semester, however you want to word that, the first marking period, I guess is probably the best terminology. I'm great with that too. So I withdraw that one so that we can get the confusion out of there. I'll withdraw the motion, is the, does the secondor agree with withdrawing the motion? I think it was Ms. First.
I think it was Ms. First, yes.
I think it was Ms. First.
So.
Yeah.
Madam clerk, can you clarify who was the secondor on the second motion?
I did not have a second on the second motion.
I think Ms. Hurst and I both said second at the same time, and the mayor recognized Ms. Hurst, is my recollection.
Okay.
I have it as you, Peter.
Okay.
Well, then I'm, then I would withdraw. I would, I would approve the withdrawal, withdrawal of the motion.
The rest of the motion was brought, has been seconded. We need a roll call vote on that, so Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, more than sufficient vote on that. And again, for the viewing public, this gets very emotional because, like me, we care about our children, our staff, the teacher administration, so we want to make sure it's done right and there's no confusion. So now, I believe we, and it's good to have this discussion, we have a formal motion now, I will discuss. How about Mrs. Naylor, do you want to make that motion?
I want to make the motion that we reopen schools remote only until the end of the first marking period, and then we shall reassess at that time.
Is there a second, I'll second. Okay, second, motion made by Ms. Naylor, seconded by Vice Chair Collins. Roll call vote is required, there's no discussion on the motion. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, more than sufficient votes. Passed, thank you very much, and to Mr. Kersher, Director Sullivan, thank you very, very much. Well, now we'll do, if I can make an editorial comment, if you don't mind. Once again, I'm so proud of this committee. Unlike some of the other elected bodies that we observe, we can go back and forth and come to, come to a reasonable agreement and listen to each other in ways that other elected bodies we observe can't. I'm proud of the way this entire committee operates, I just have to say that, that's all.
May I, Mayor, can I say something? Thank you, Chris, and I don't know if we'll be able to go over this in our working session, but I do think that seeing that we just took that vote and everyone, I'm sure, will continue to hit the ground running tomorrow in planning. You know, when Maria says that we need to have these reports, I think it's really important that we do. I also really implore us to think about having a more consistent meeting schedule because that 12 weeks, or 10 weeks, or whenever the semester ends, is going to be upon us so quickly that I don't want to find us needing, you know, in the 11th hour, you know, a week or two before this really critical decision has to be made, especially, God forbid, that the cases are ticking up. I, I would really like to be able to ensure that we are getting information consistently and being able to sort of talk and digest it the way that we just did over the course of the last week and a half, but to be able to do that with enough time.
Just for clarification, on our count, we have a meeting scheduled for the 13th. We have a meeting scheduled for the 20th. We would then have the 27th off without a meeting and be back here on the 3rd, so, and then be back again on the 17th. And if necessary to have one in between those times, we will. So we've actually got three more within the, three more within the next four weeks, so.
Before we hit the 14th, Chris, right? Okay, and I more so mean before we hit the end of the semester in November too.
We will do this first as we've done this last, again, Desi just gave the guidelines. Manny and I, Director Sullivan, July 27th, we've called, this is three emergency, county and town hall, which is about three and a half hours, two, and two emergency meetings, we've called within the last, less than a week. So we're more than willing to do that, again. Okay, so can I, Attorney Phelps, that really addresses, we still technically have to go to the vote of, I want to know if that addresses the vote there on A.
Yes.
Okay, so I don't have, because we're still reopening, so that addresses that, okay. Thank you so much, thank you, Detective Harris, thank you, Ms. First, thank you, Director Sullivan, again. Now, we'll continue with voting items. B, that has been tabled, that has been tabled. So we're now going to be, C, approve the memorandum of agreement MOA with the Springfield Substitute Teachers Association Superintendent Ward, attorney and director, HR director and labor relations director, Attorney Bill Mahoney is also here. So again, this is C, approved memorandum of agreement MOA with the Springfield Substitute Teachers Association Superintendent Ward.
Well, and Melissa, do you want to explain this?
Attorney Shay is also on it too.
So, yes, thank you, Mayor.
So, can you, can you hear, can you hear him?
Yes.
I can hear him, Mayor, yep.
I can.
So the substitute teachers, we are concerned that we want to make sure that we have enough qualified substitute teachers for the year. So in talking with the school department, I reached out to the UFCW, which represents substitute teachers, and we discussed the concept of qualifying our zone cluster substitute teachers in our, okay, non-consecutive substitute teachers. There's three ranks in the collective area, the zone cluster substitute teachers who work 150 days a year. Then there are the day-to-day, and then there are the 45-day non-consecutive, and then there's the day-to-day substitute teachers. So depending on your attendance from the previous year, depends on who qualifies you for a selection for one of the higher-ranked substitute teacher categories. But because we only had a short year last year of actually being in the school buildings, what we did is, we took the percentage of days that you actually worked, and then we analyzed how many days using that percentage you would have worked if you had gone for a whole school year. So we took all the zone cluster substitutes, and we just automatically qualified them for the next year. And then we took anyone else who qualified based on that analysis that we did, we qualified them as well. And what that does, that allows the principals to select from that group. Because if you're automatically a zone cluster substitute teacher, it just means that you're now in the group that can be selected from. Same thing with the 45-day non-consecutive. We did an analysis based on how many days you would actually work when school was in session. And we calculated how many days, we continued that percentage all the way through the end of the school year, how many days you would have gotten. And then we moved you into the 45-day non-consecutive category. So UFCW was fine with that analysis. They want to sign on to, but I want to condition that on the approval of the committee. Again, we just want to make sure that we have enough zone cluster subs, enough 45-day non-consecutives in case you need a full school year. Thank you, Attorney Mahoney, Superintendent Ward, and recommend the group of mental.
Any comments or questions from the school committee members? Here we go, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Attorney Murphy, roll call vote is required, Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Ms. Hurst?
Sorry, yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Latonya?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, more than sufficient vote is better, passes, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, we'll see you next week. Motion by Vice Chair Collins, is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Ms. Perez, roll call vote is required in Zoom meetings, Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mayor Sarno?
Yes, more than sufficient vote is better, passes, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, we'll see you next week. Motion by Vice Chair Collins, is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Ms. Perez, roll call vote is required in Zoom meetings, Madam clerk, please call the roll.